6:00 PM, June the 1st, 2021. Call to order, county council meeting. As a reminder, the public has two times that they can speak in council meeting. First is public comments, and the second is public hearing, if there's one scheduled. Other than those two times, the public should remain silent during the council meeting. Anyone making disturbance during the meeting will be asked to leave council chambers for the remainder of the meeting. Mr. Reed?
We went ahead and put the ordinance section on the board so folks would know that we have a legal backing that we have to uphold so everyone has a fair and equal opportunity to participate. Some folks have called in and said, you know, when there's clapping or whatever, or folks yelling from the background, they don't feel so inclined to come. So we want folks to come with opposing views, so everyone comes, has an opportunity to speak at the appropriate time. And we don't want Deputy Kim to have to arrest anybody, I'm sure she doesn't want to either, so if we can just keep it with the proper decorum, that will be great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Reed?
Public comment session. Each person has four minutes to speak. When there's one minute remaining, I'll hold up this sign. When your time's up, I'll hold up this sign. Mr. David Dahl.
I want to give each of you a catchment. Good afternoon. As was said, my name is David Dahl, and my wife and I live in the Richland community, which of course is in District 4. Thank you for this opportunity. I've lived in this county since 1986. Matter of fact, two of my three children attended school in these hallways years ago. So to start off, thank you for letting, lifting the mask requirement during the last meeting. I hope you've noticed more smiling faces as I have. Secondly, I want to read something. I want to read part of the Republican creed, namely the last paragraph, and I quote, "It is my heritage to stand erect, proud, and unafraid, to think and act for myself, enjoy the benefit of my creations, to face the whole world boldly and say, 'I am a free American,'" end quote. So along with this, I think we could all agree, should we not be free thinkers as well? I would hope so. Now with that said, all of you, each of you are duly elected. Each of you were elected by the residents of your counties, and knowing that, each of you should be respectful to the other. At the last council meeting, I was sitting right where I'm sitting now, basically, on the front row so I could hear. I have a service-connected hearing loss in my right ear, and when someone speaks from a podium like this, I have to be able to see their lips to be able to understand. And so I was sitting there. Two issues came up at the last meeting that brought on spirited debate, as they should have. They were the mask ordinance and the proposed budget. Regarding the mask ordinance, when Mr. Durham stated his reasons for wanting to cancel the required mask rule, with Mr. Durham being a free-thinking person, as we all are, Mr. Kane said something to the effect that Mr. Durham belonged to QAnon, and there were no studies that showed the wearing of masks were detrimental. I can tell you right now, my draw about hit the floor, not only for the out-of-hand comment about QAnon ties, but also no science-based studies about wearing masks and the overall U.S. reaction to the COVID-19 virus. Next, both Mr. Hart and Mr. Durham asked the council to take a breath and again review the budget. Well, they were both looked at like they each had two heads. Now, when then accusations were made that saying they did not support law enforcement or they did not want the county employees to get a raise, none of this was true. They had me shaking my head as well. Now, I want to ask each of you to look at the handouts I gave you. The first, the Great Barrington Declaration, is just one of the studies that have been performed, not only in the U.S., but some around the world that say the opposite than what the CDC until recently had been saying. This document was signed in October of 2020, and please look at the qualifications of the one that signed it. These are not QAnon followers. Another great article that I did not share was written by Dr. Scott Atlas. He was in the Trump administration, and he writes in a Hillsdale College presentation imprimis that speaks on the same thing essentially as the Barrington Declaration. The next attachment, believe it or not, is a Tell Willie comment published on May the 22nd. The writer is just asking a few questions about the budget process and the possibility of doing studies with similar-sized counties to see if we are aligned with those other counties. For example, my understanding, and I'm not sure about this, is that Pickens County has twice the population, but their budget is smaller. Any conclusion? Thank you very much. I thank Mr. Kane, I owe Mr. Durham an apology for those comments. Thank you.
Perry Smith.
Hey, good afternoon. I'm Perry Smith. I'm from the District 4. I represent District 4 as well as the O'Conne County Conservatives. First off, I'd like to thank Miss Brock for allowing the, for helping get the pastors into the Utica Mill to help with the folks down there. I'd like to thank you for that. It seems that the Utica Mill has been a big topic on everybody's minds here for some reason. I guess the drugs and the people that's homeless, just taking up shelter there. I'd like to ask, why are you guys not interested or worried about the Westminster Mill Hill? There's several places in Westminster that need help. The Wahala Mill Hill, there's a lot of mill hills around here that needs help, but you guys are seeming to be concentrating only on the Utica Mill Hill. The codes enforcement officer, again, I'd like to know how these drug addicts and homeless people are going to pay all these fines when they get fined for having trash and stuff in the yard. You know, how are they going to do that? I bet they don't even have insurance. You know, when you guys make these, when you guys make these people go, move out of the, out of this mill hill, where are they going to go? Whose land are they going to take up? Where are they, you know, who, whose burden are they going to be? They going to move in on your property? On your property? Yours? Where are they going to move? Right now, they're behind Lowe's, they're behind Belks, they're behind law mart. Who's, you know, who, whose burden are they going to be? That's, that's what you guys need to understand, is when you make a move, or you, where are they going? You guys are putting this codes enforcement officer in, in place, and you know these people can't pay fines. You know who y'all want them to find is us. Y'all want them to come find us, the people who are law-abiding citizens that might have a car in their yard that can pay fines. That's who y'all want to find. That's how y'all want to raise your money for the county to find us, to find all these people right here that actually have something, have jobs, and they can afford to, you know, pay your fines. It's just like the transport police. They, they work the county, and they pull over the local people that, local, you know, the local business owners, and they fine them. They don't, today, there was somebody pulled over in front of a square day, transport police pulling over a local businessman to fine them. That's what y'all want. Y'all want to fine us, because you know a drug addict can't pay a fine, right? They can't pay a fine. So anyway, Mr. Elliott, Mr. Hart, and Mr. Durham, I see you three as the conservative Republicans. I mean, you, you guys are the ones that attended your district meetings. I see the others as not, possibly Democrats. Reason I say this is you said in the bit, the meeting, your district meeting, I was there, that you heard everybody. So that tells me that you are a conservative Republican. So if you heard everybody, you should be taking up for the citizens on the tax, taxpayers, you should be taking up for them, you should be cutting this budget. That should be your number-one goal, because that's what you told us, is you're a conservative Republican. You should be voting with these three, these two guys right here. Also, you should be voting for the county to be a sanctuary county for the unborn. You're a conservative Republican, and you're not against, you're not for abortion, you're against it. So I don't understand why you wouldn't vote that in for this county. You are a conservative Republican, that's what you told us. I was there. So I think that you guys should really, you should think about that, because what you told us in that meeting was definitely different. I think also the litter, I heard something about litter. Use the dang people that's in jail. Use them, free help, Mr. Kane, use them to pick up the litter. Free help. Don't cost taxpayers money.
Tony Adams.
I'm Tony Adams, and I'm speaking as concerned taxpayer of O'Conne County. I want to speak on three agenda items tonight. First, the one and a half million dollars that the sewer authority wanted the county to loan or give or whatever. I was at that sewer commission meeting when that came up, along with two friends. And it came up as upfront money that the sewer commission needed until they could start actually putting pipe in the line and drawing on the, on the grant, and then it would be paid back to the county. I got two witnesses with me that heard that. When I read Larry Brandt's letter to you in the backup material, it said something completely different. As a matter of fact, in that sewer commission meeting, they gave us some budget in place. There's nothing about a million and a half dollar restricted plan or restricted account in there. So, that just says, Mr. Brandt's letter is not correct. Okay? Now, with that being said, I know for a fact, going to that meeting, sewer commission in bad financial shape, but they put themselves there, but they do probably need some help. Excuse my French, but it's a damned if you do, damned if you don't situation. Okay, second thing. Mr. Elliott, when the talk first came up about the coronavirus relief fund, he mentioned two, two projects, $2 million for Salem to finish Salem Waterline. Salem Representatives are here tonight, they've got the information for it. Also, he wanted to set aside money to finish, or excuse me, stand sewer south phase two to exit four. And you asked for information on that. Nobody's here to give it to you. And I'm here to tell you, knowing O'Conne politics like I do, if you don't push it, you won't get anything from sewer commission. Because I don't believe everyone wants to start on phase two anyway. Now, the third item, is y'all negotiating with Up Country Fiber, which is wholly owned by Blue Ridge, or joint venture between Blue Ridge and Western Carolina Telecom. Don't really know. But I do know that, though, you had a lease purchase agreement with One-Tone, and that lease purchase agreement calls for installment payments, and I believe you're going to try to get the county's taxpayers' money back out of there. So what I'm going to say is, Blue Ridge elect the co-op is a lot better capitalized than One-Tone ever was. They was a small, under-capitalized company with not much chance to succeed anyway. So, what I'm saying, you don't need to give away that fiber optic cable in the ground that taxpayers own. You need to get at least the same lease purchase agreement with Upstate Fiber that you had with One-Tone. And even with them being better capitalized and better financial position, you might even speed up the payment process. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Jennifer Bell.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Bell, and I'm from Fair Play. I would like to address a couple of issues that the citizens of our area have shown major concerns for. First, I would like to point out, as others have, that this session is out of order from the very beginning. We should have the prayer first, for God's wisdom to lead the council and to connect you with the public in understanding and direction for our county. Then we should follow with the pledge that unites us all in the desire to improve our nation, beginning at the county level. Now, for the main reason I'm here speaking, I would like to request a workshop for the budget, and if necessary, a postponement. The reason for this request is that the majority of the county is completely unaware of the budget size and what it involves. Most people learned of the budget at the first reading, where three of you seemed to agree. That time of discussion had passed. When was the time for us to learn about the budget? Where is it posted, line for line, for the people to have the transparency and the understanding of how the five of our councilmen are spending our hard-earned money? Why do we have three readings if there is no time allotted for discussion or correction? What could possibly be negative of really digging into the budget to see if there is room to save money in some areas to help offset the new spending that will cause us to be eventually taxmore? The five of you are handling our money and make it seem we have no say in how you decide to spend it. When did you seek direction from your constituents? The people of O'Conne work hard for what we have, and having the discussion of how much to take from us and decide how to spend it without a care for how we feel is wrong on every level. There is, eh, I'm sorry, there is a divide in the council. Where two asked the others for a chance to take one day to look everything over to be sure that there was an understanding and that the county is being frugal with the citizens' money, three of you said no. Do you understand we, the people, want the most for our dollars? Do you realize that it appears at minimum that the three, two vote was out of spite? You were all elected, and you all ran on conservative principles and a tight fiscal budget. Now the majority is doing the opposite. O'Conne is waking up, and people are starting to pay attention and would like answers. You are all now beginning to be scrutinized for your votes. Republicans stand for smaller government, and all five of you claim to be Republican. That is who we voted in, and I'm asking that you all vote as Republicans and do what's right, and go over this budget in depth. Show the people that you will follow through right now on your campaign promises. Thanks for your time.
Sean Tilson.
My name's Sean Tilson. I'm the District 3 Director for the O'Conne County Republican Party. Tonight, I would like to address the topic of respect. Before I do that, I want to recognize Mr. Kane, Mr. Davis, and Ms. Brock, and everybody who assisted in the team-up to clean up effort within the Utica area. As someone who was raised in that area, I can tell you that it personally means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to the residents of Utica. I respect the work that you've done, and just wanted to say thank you. On the topic of respect, I'd like to say that the May 18th council meeting was revealing to me. During this meeting, little respect was shown between each of you. I heard insinuations about QAnon. I heard councilmen referred to as delusional. I heard mockery of councilmen through remarks about rolling back taxes to the Stone Age, and I witnessed a councilman directly reprimand the public regarding making comments. None of this is constructive, and only serves to create concern for those who elected you. It also provides the easy-to-pick, low-hanging fruit for our local media outlet to use to routinely mock you and this process to its thousands of subscribers. Regarding respect of the public, I wonder how often each of you meet with those in your respective districts to discuss upcoming issues or issues in general. The budget, for instance, is a hot topic of conversation right now. How many of you have asked those you represent how they feel about it? Do you just lean on the fact that you're the elected representative and know what's best for your district, or do you show respect and listen to those who elected you? I would venture to say that most, if not all, districts are represented here tonight. Do you feel that your vote truly represents your constituents? Consider whether your vote is creating unity between you and your district, or division between you and your district. Lastly, I'd like to call out what was, for me, the most disheartening lack of respect from the May 18th meeting. There was a resident from Westminster who spoke in favor of protecting our monuments. He brought with him both his daughters, one of which stood alongside him while he spoke. He stated he was a teacher of 15 years, but more importantly, he stated that he was an Army Combat Veteran of 23 years who was deployed five times, four of which were to Afghanistan and the Middle East. During council comments, I felt confident that I would hear some, if not all of you, thank this veteran for his service. This man risked his life to protect our freedoms and was here to continue his pursuit of the same. Not one thank you. Nothing. He stated that he brought his daughters with him because, quote, "They are the future of this country." His daughters witnessed the lack of respect not only between each of you, but for their father as well. I wonder what kind of message they left with. I would ask that you consider my comments as critical but constructive feedback for improving this and all future meetings. Respect is the key to working together and making the right decisions for our county, while also providing the confidence needed by the county residents that ensures them that you are all working together for the common good. Thank you.
Ted Brewer.
I'm Ted Brewer. I live in the Salem area, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the ordinance for preserving the cultural and historic preservation of O'Conne County. I appreciate you, gentlemen, for your public service, for the opportunity you have at this point to help us preserve a lot of history. We have a very rich history in O'Conne County, as you know, for several different minorities that are today are descendants of the forefathers that lived several centuries ago. And a lot of what was existing back in the 16, 1700s is no longer there. The only thing there now is a marker. And as you drive around the county, you'll find these markers that give some history of what happened in that area. Kiwi Town, for example, right down there off of, outside the Salem area, has nothing left besides what's under the lake, along with Fort Prince George, and just a lot of history was carried on here in previous centuries. I was driving down the Gap Hill area the other day from, headed toward Pickens, and we turned down to the Berry Farm, and there, behind that Gap Hill Methodist Church, there was a historic section of the Cherokee Path. It did not have a marker, never has, as far as I know in that area. There is a marker in Six Mile in town about the Cherokee Path. But this is a historic path that ran from Charleston all the way up into the Carolinas, North Carolina, and up into Tennessee. So it was a very important historical path, and that particular segment behind the church is no longer visible because that whole woods has been clear-cut. There's a construction going on up there on the highway that has gone back into the woods, and behind the church where the Cherokee Path ran, it's just been leveled. So we've lost some of our Cherokee Path history in O'Conne County right there. So I would encourage you all to approve this ordinance that would be fine, stiff fine, I believe $500. I know you all have seen all of these documents about the various monuments that we have in O'Conne County and the markers. And I'm sure you all will want to preserve that, and I ask you to vote for that ordinance. Thank you.
I apologize in advance for mispronouncing a name. Pete Bell, or excuse me. You might hear from me again, I don't know. Thank you. I'd like to start off by, I had an issue last, at the last meeting about our water mill, and about asking you guys for support. Well, I talked to Matt Durham about this, and I didn't go any further with it because I had a lot of people fired up. And before I talked behind anybody's back, I went and saw Brian Ramey face-to-face, and he answered my questions. I'm not 100% satisfied, and I don't think you'd ever be 100% satisfied, but at least I know the direction it's going. And, and Mr. Davis, you could, you could have answered my questions. Brian was surprised that you didn't answer that when I was here, so I just thought I'd bring that up. But anyways, taken care of. So it's out of the way, and I've got an opportunity to follow up on that. I came in here tonight, before I came here, I listened to our president. We're losing our democracy. We have racial terror, tax and spending, bills being pushed loaded with unnecessary spending through Congress without a floor debate. We need to pass the bill to see what's in it. Now, that's not all his, his words, that's someone that comes from Congress, comes with Nancy Pelosi and different people that have passed bills that we didn't even have a chance to look at or debate about. And guys, the last meeting that I was here, and I'm not trying to throw, throw stones at anybody, but I see, I see we got a division in our, our local government here. And that's a good thing to have, but discussion is also a good thing to have, back and forth. And we need to have that now. We live in a little island here of O'Conne County that we need to separate right now from the rest of, the rest of the government, and take charge and build our own government up for, for the kids and for the kids' futures, and for the jobs and the futures. And think about the way that we spend the money in the county wisely. I listened to Mr. Hart bring up some things about the, about the budget, and I'd also like to see the same, the same idea with a, a budget review and a budget workshop, so that you guys can kick these ideas around and come up with solutions. I can't remember the exact wording of it, but when we used to do our, 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 our work at the, at the plant to try to solve problems, we'd put a board out, and we'd have five, 10 people, and they'd all give a, what they like, what they like, what they like, and all of a sudden, you'd take one, two, three, four, five, and the next thing you know, the person that didn't like number two is for it, because it made sense, they had a chance to talk about it. And this is what I'd like to see with the county up here, with our, with our representatives, if it would work. We don't need to, to get into a whole lot of taxation without representation here. And that's basically why, the reason I came to these meetings, I like to be represented a little bit more. And I'm getting, getting used to, you know, what's going on, and listening to debates, I listen to Tony, I listen to the young lady before me. We've all got the same, pretty much the same idea, and, and, you know, we vote for you guys to put these things together, so I appreciate it, and that's all I've got to say right now. Thank you.
Nick Kayle.
Kayle McIntosh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Ms. Brock and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to bring up some concerns. I am a relatively new resident of O'Conne County, and I live just outside of Seneca on South Radio Station, right where the tornado came through. And that's the concern I have, is that road. People routinely come through there 60, 70 miles an hour. They come up over the hill and shoot down the hill, and they buzz past the five houses that we are from the other direction. At the end of South Radio Station at the intersection of Pruitt and Radisson, there is a stop sign, and then, and they were repaving that the year I moved here. It had, nothing else has been done, and the section of road from radio station to, or Pruitt to Return Church Road is badly potted, edges are crumbling, it needs to be repaved. Notably, the O'Conne County Joint Sewer Trucks are some of the faster-moving vehicles that come by. I've seen sheriff's cars go when they weren't doing flashing lights or sirens, and they're but they're not as fast as some of the high-wheel, loud Jeeps and so forth that come through. And recently, someone plowed through part of my yard, went over a good-sized azalea completely, and almost missed, almost didn't miss a large oak tree. They left, were hauled out, must have been in the middle of the night before I knew who it was or anything about it, but it is getting to be dangerous. But it is getting to be dangerous, and there are families on the other end where there's a straightaway, and people just go too fast. If they could put some signs up to remind people what the speed limit is, I believe it's 35 in a residential zone out in the country, I'd appreciate that. We would all. Second item I would like to address to the committee is the lack of a plastics recycling industry in Oconee County. We, all during COVID, Pickens County was able to recycle their plastic, and we were just filling up a landfill. I think that if we could get a plastics facility here, then we might get an industry that would create something useful, such as a woman in Kenya did with plastic bottles, cement, and sand. And she is now shipping paving blocks all over the world. The last question, or last item I have for the council is related to preservation. While enhancing the economics, it's a challenge to do both. But please, I've lived in many places, from Pacific to the Atlantic and back again, and I've seen too many towns fall for the development dollar and become ruined. And this is such a wonderful place up here. Please be careful about what you do with development because it could very easily turn into another Charleston. Let me forget. Thank you.
Matt Postel?
Good evening. I'm Postel from Westminster. Glad to forgive me. I don't have my glasses on, so if I look barbarly bending over, just forgive me. All right, so this is directed to Mr. Kane. Last meeting you stayed, and Mr. Durham did not give any data or cite anything to support his position on his use of masks. I didn't know you're supposed to give data when arguing from a moral standpoint. His argument was, if we are free people, should we not have the liberty to decide for ourselves? You know, that used to be a conservative view. So you wanted data from Mr. Durham? Well, here it is. Mr. Kane, have you heard of the MIT study just a few weeks ago? Conclusion, masks and social distancing are ineffective. What about the Dana Study? Heard about that one? Conclusion, masks are ineffective. What about the Stanford Study? Conclusion, face masks are ineffective. What about the John Hopkins Study? Conclusion, the total deaths in 2020 were no different than the previous years when you take into effect the population increase of the United States. What about the CDC's analysis using county-by-county data that showed only a 1.32% decrease in cases and deaths between counties with mask mandates and counties with no mask mandates? What about the CDC Case Rate Study that showed well over 80% of cases always or often wore masks? The study called into question the utility of wearing masks. What about the randomized trial of cloth masks compared with medical masks? The conclusion, moisture retention, reuse of cloth masks, and poor filtration may increase risk of infection. What about OSHA saying cloth masks will not protect the wearer against airborne transmissible infectious agents due to a loose fit and lack of seal or inadequate filtration? What about 3M Corporation that manufactures masks stating that surgical procedural masks cannot provide certified respiratory protection? Mr. Kane, are these peer-reviewed articles and data from the government and corporations conspiracy theories? Whatever happens following the science, it seems we only follow the science when it supports preconceived notions and goals. Thank you.
Postel, P-O-S-T-E-L-L.
Kate Knapp?
Hello. It's actually Kay Knapp.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm a relatively new resident here as well. I've lived here about a year and a half in Seneca, came here from Green Bay, Wisconsin. We came to be with family and also to get out of the winter, six months of winter. So we've been pleased with that. But I have to tell you, the added bonus has been the people in this county. They are conservative, they're hardworking, family-loving, and God-loving people, just like me. And they love their country and hate what's happening to it. They come to city and county meetings just like this, and they should be welcomed. I applaud the new leadership of the Oconee County Republican Party. They are getting people involved. Hundreds went to the recent Oconee Republican Convention and precinct meetings. In order to get our country back, the fight starts here at the local level. I want to thank Mr. Durham for leading the charge. You may be new to the council, but you do your homework, you stand up for what you promised in the election, and now you're fighting this ever-growing budget. Thank you. I may not live in your district, but I'm behind you 100%. Thank you also, Mr. Hart, for being his lone support on this council. Thank you.
Vicki Haney?
Is there going to be a public comment section on the budget?
Yes.
Second reading? I'd rather just speak on that.
Carl Ober? Nope. And the last person only signed their name, Mike.
Accident.
Do you wish to speak?
I'm sorry?
Do you wish to speak?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Not at this point.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other people want to speak before we close? Yes, sir. Yes, come forward. Come forward to the podium, please, sir. State your name.
How are you? I'm Scott Lusk, Fair Play, and I just wanted to talk about boat docks and furniture. Kind of new at this, but I would just hope that with the boat docks, to me, you've picked a reputable company. But have you, and I don't know anything about it, and we can't ask questions, but I would hope that it's of a material that's very sustainable, such as Trex or something like that. And I was going to question the dock system if you looked at spud poles and the anchoring system because Lake Kiwi doesn't fluctuate like Lake Harbald. And I would like to know the size of those docks, too, because that helps know you're getting the bang for your buck. And then when it comes to furniture, I read somewhere, I believe, that we're looking at $80,000, $85,000 for furniture for a backup 911 system office that would be activated in a severe emergency. And I'm just wondering, you know, and the company where the furniture's coming from, I noticed, was in Colorado. So the question is, why do we have to spend so much? What does that get us for a system that may not ever be used unless we're training here and there? And why Colorado when we could have bought furniture locally to stimulate our economy here? So, and then one other thing, when it came to all the consultant companies, I noticed they were all out of Greenville, and maybe Oconee County just doesn't have those types of firms to offer. But it just, I wish we could keep things more at home and stimulate our own economy instead of reaching out. It seems like we're doing something. That's all I got. Thank you.
Yeah, some of the comments, and I'll start off by saying that we did have three budget committee meetings that all five of us participated in. Ms. Brock invited all of us anytime that comes to in time with her on the budget. And I'll remind the public that we are not going to have a tax increase, no tax increase. If the value of the mill comes in less, we'll cut expenses. But there will not be a tax increase for, I believe, the second year in a row. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to congratulate everyone that spoke. I think you all did an excellent job. In our last meeting, we were talking about the budget. And Mr. Elliott told me it was sort of late in the game to bring up what I was talking about. 30 minutes later, in the third reading of the mask ordinance, Mr. Elliott changes the date on it by 11 days. Now, if he can do that on the third reading, why can't we do that with this budget? Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, I totally noticed that in the public. Amen. I'm just going to run down it real quick. Mr. Dobbs, I appreciate your words. I mean, sometimes we get passionate up here, and sometimes maybe we get out of hand, and we all have a hand in keeping decor, all five of us. Mr. Smith, for the Utica Mill, it's not an easy fix. You know, you can't just go in there and bulldoze it down because those people have to go somewhere. So it's a very complex situation. It's not as easy as just going in there and knocking it down and cleaning it up. Mr. Adams, Sewer South Phase Two, have we got any numbers on that?
We have some preliminary numbers, Mr. Durham. The sewer authority is not in a position at this moment because we're getting close to the deadline for the easement acquisitions and construction beginning for Phase One that we're currently in, out with active grant. For us to provide those numbers, we do have preliminary engineering numbers that we received in 2017. As anyone could expect, there would be some increases on that estimation based on current market price. I can bring back a number at any time based on that estimation. And until we get drawings and easements, we won't have an accurate number that we can put our hand on solid.
And then, Mr. Adams, you also spoke about the fiber network. As it stands, it's been millions of dollars of taxpayer money, you know, local and federal money that's been rotting in the ground, in essence. Hopefully, we can come to a solution here soon to recoup taxpayer money and also to provide much-needed high-speed internet to the citizens of the county. Ms. Bell, you spoke, and someone else spoke last week about saying the prayer first and the prayers are religions. I think that's a good idea. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we reorder the agenda to pray, have a moment of silence and pledge before we take any other actions because as a councilman, it'd be nice to have that moment of silence for prayer before we address the citizens. Mr. Tilson, again, you spoke about respect and decor. We all play a role in that. Mr. Brewer, I appreciate you coming out and speaking in defense of the monuments and the ordinance. And in Oconee County, we can have local control and some local rule to take actions to protect our history ourselves. And I'm proud of this council for taking that action. And I don't expect there to be any reason why that should not pass or not. Mr. Pete, I spoke with Mary Ramey after you had spoke with him. Oh, I can't see you, but, and it sounds like you guys had a good conversation. And that's all people want is a, they want clarity, you know? Sometimes you don't understand, but you can speak, and you can have understanding after that point. Ms. McIntosh, I wrote down McIntosh, but I don't think that was your correct name. It is correct, okay. South Radio Station Road, is that county road, state road?
State, yes.
It's a state road? And as far as the plastic recycling, the issue we've had is finding people to buy the plastic. And a lot of the communities who have continued recycling, they've had to pay for that to have it recycled. Now, you know, you're deciding to, the cost to keep them throwing in the ground, so you've got to weigh what you want, what the citizens are willing to do. But Ms. Brock, has there been any update on recycling prices?
Not in the past 30 days or so. We did get one lead on a company that was locating or potentially locating somewhere in the middle of Tennessee, but still wanted to charge $82, $25, or $83 per ton plus shipping. And when we calculate that tonnage, it just seems like an exponential amount to ship for return on only certain types of plastics, which we would have to separate prior to shipping.
What do we pay for normal solid waste dispersals?
$33.18 together, Homer, Georgia, which does include shipping.
Okay. Mr. Postel, I appreciate your citations on the mask. Suppose I said I came better prepared with my own citations last week. And Ms. Knapp, I want to thank you for the words of encouragement. And Mr. Lusk, the boat docks, what material is it out of?
Aluminum and concrete.
They're aluminum and concrete.
Aluminum and concrete?
They're regulated, and we have certain requirements that we have to meet for Duke and Perk because they are on the Duke Energy Lake, and they're considered courtesy docks. So there are certain standards and regulations we have to meet on behalf of Duke Energy and Perk.
Okay. And then you also spoke about like local, you know, purchasing local, hiring out local firms. Mr. Hart mentioned that a few weeks ago about the cleanup on some of the banks, the creeks, and that struck a chord because I've heard it from a lot of people. You know, we ought to look at something in a purchasing procedure, if it's not already there, to buy local first, you know?
Local vendors, if I may, were contacted for the dock construction and for the engineering services.
Okay. And if I left somebody out, I apologize. Thank you.
Excuse me, any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. I wanted to address Mr. Durham, and I admit I was very angry when I made that comment. And I assume you are not actually, you do not believe in QAnon conspiracy theories. Is that correct?
That's true.
Okay. I apologize for that. I was set in anger. I've just been very frustrated, as I'm sure we all have, with, there's certainly differences of opinion, even within the scientific community. My wife is a, has a PhD in biology from Clemson, and the folks that she's friends with, who are researchers, scientists, have informed me that masks do work. They are not the silver bullet, but they do work. Fortunately, most, many people have gotten vaccinated now, so there's not a need, according to the CDC, to wear masks indoors, as long as you're vaccinated. So, Mr. Durham, I do hope you accept my apology. Secondly, a gentleman mentioned the Westminster and Wahala Mill Communities. And I don't know specifically if those communities are within the cities or within the county. The reason that Utica has been focused on substantially. Number one, a concerned group of citizens reached out to me to, or with Ann Hope. You know, I met this church probably five or six years ago. So we want to help, and we need the partnership with the government to get things done. And so we've worked over there in Utica for years. I think things are getting better, but we're certainly not to where we need to be. And I thank all of our staff and all of the community for being involved in helping Utica get back on its feet. That problem wasn't created by government. It was created by an industry leaving. But it takes a whole community to rebuild it. And so, you know, if those are in this county areas, these Westminster and Wahala Mill Communities, you know, that's certainly the county responsibility. Otherwise, it's going to be a responsibility to cities. And third, a lot of folks come up here and talk about the Republican meetings. And I know, I was elected to serve District Three, not just the Republicans. I was elected to serve everybody. But I never received an invitation to that district meeting. So I just wanted to point that out, that I wasn't informed of the date or the time or the location of that. And so, you know, be happy to meet again. I spoke with a gentleman last week, said I'm happy to meet, just let me know when and where. And I'm happy to coordinate schedules. So not dodging anybody, but would appreciate an invitation and make sure that that works with everybody's schedule. So that's all I've got, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, moment of silence, please. Mr. Ritt?
Yes, sir. Pray with me if you'd like to. Well, Father, thank you for giving us life, for creating us and holding us together. Help us to remember that, to be mindful that we didn't create ourselves. We don't keep our lives going, that we are completely dependent upon you and your goodwill. And so remind us to be appreciative of that and all of your many blessings. And along those lines, Father, help us not to focus first on whose side we are on, except for that we are on your side. That our choices, council's choices, decisions, and staff's ability to help That our choices, council's choices, decisions and staff's ability to help them lines up with your will, with what is ultimate truth and goodness. And it's hard for us to discern sometimes with all the clutter in this world, but help us to see and to hear clearly. In your name I pray. Amen.
Mr. Davis, will you lead us into the pledge?
Please, David. Bloods, legions, give the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your motion to approve Bay Eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, regular minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Brock?
And again, I would like to call House and public comment. Virgin encouraged for unity, certainly a warm welcome here. The House divided fault. Just a couple of notes. Um, one is a housekeeping matter in the backup budget document that is online. We made an error. There are two pages I independently distributed to you at the very beginning of this meeting. Do you have any change on anticipated revenues? They have no change on anticipated spending choice. The resulting change wa, came from the April thirteenth Budget Committee meeting regarding fees as far as, um, building permits in the Building Coats Department and, uh, CND and commercial tipping fees for the solid waste apartments. At the appropriate time when this matter is brought up for discussion, Mr. Brew will state a motion for an amendment to include the two corrected pages in the current budget document. We simply left them off as a measure, and I apologize for that error. One more note of matter after last meeting's discussion. My staff and I thought it would be very helpful for anyone who is not familiar with the budget document or who has not gone through this budget document to provide an explanation of any change. Um, these are, this change is incorporated in the new budget book. This document will also be available online. If anybody likes a paper copy of it, reach out to me, we'd be happy to, or email it to you. It is department by department. In the event that y'all wanted to go through that tonight, it is included in the budget books that are on your DS for you.
Mr. Ritten?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Along the lines of what Ms. Brock was mentioning, once we get to twenty twenty-one zero one, the county budget, um, we start the reading on it. Once we have a motion and a second, we'll need a motion to amend, and it can simply be, and I'll state the motion at that point, simply be to substitute in these two pages, which I note have footers on them, Attachment B Fee Schedule Amendment, that reflect the fiscal year twenty-two, the accurate fiscal year twenty twenty-two fees for building codes and solid waste. The other matter I need, a motion now, if council sees fit, to amend the agenda to add an executive session item. This would be to receive legal advice and discuss a contractual matter related to the request by the sewer authority for the one point five million dollars that's on the agenda.
Make a motion, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, related to that, need a motion to amend the agenda to move the item. It's an action item stated, discuss and take appropriate action on request from O'Conne Joint Regional Sewer Authority to County for one point five million dollars to be placed in a restricted account and to serve as surety for the EDA grant relative to the Sewer of South project. Need a motion to move that till after executive session, subsequent to our discussion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Could you explain that?
Yes, sir.
Where, where's this money going and are we gonna have control of it?
Well, that's gonna be one of the things we talk about in executive session, talk about our relationship with the sewer authority, talk about any legal issues that may arise. And we're gonna have that, now with the motion amended, to have that during executive session. The second motion is to have the discussion about that request from the sewer authority after I give you all legal advice during executive session. So we'll come back into open session then, and then we'll have that motion. So this is just moving that action item to after executive session.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, O'Conne County Conservation Bank Funding Approval Request. The first one we've got is Taiko Eta property, O'Conne County Conservation Bank Board Easement Funding. Bank Board unanimously approved on Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one for council funding in the amount of seventy thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for a conservation easement to Upstate Forever. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Andy Smith, Chair of the O'Conne County Conservation Bank Board. Um, our ordinance, your ordinance, requires applicants to meet certain criteria to get a grant from us, and you know that our grants are limited to ten percent of the conservation value of the property. So the Taiko Eta property, it's a small property, forty-two acres. The intention is to put conservation easement on it to permanently conserve that property, which has, uh, uh, natural resource values and being forested and having a half mile upstream and a three-acre pond there that will have buffers around that pond. Um, it is suitable for threatened and endangered species such as the O'Conne bell. It's not far from, uh, known populations of the O'Conne bell, which is a rare endemic species that is endangered. The forested areas will be managed for wildlife and for natural growth. The property helps maintain the general scenic value of the area. Um, it protects a portion of a tributary of Cornhouse Creek, which flows into Lake Kiwi. This property is, um, not far from Devil's State Fort Park, um, and also a golf course near there where it flows into, uh, Lake Kiwi, which is a drinking water source. So it, uh, protects water quality. Um, the grant is for, would be for seventeen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. The, the appraised value of the property is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The, the value, the diminishment in the value by permanently taking away the development rights is a hundred and, uh, eighty thousand dollars. Our grant would be for ten percent of that. The landowners, they often go out and get other funds since they are decreasing the value of their property. They sometimes get compensated for that. Part of that compensation is coming through this grant. Oftentimes, landowners or applicants go to the South Carolina Conservation Bank to get additional grants, the Natural Resource Conservation Service to get additional grants. Um, the landowners here, they're asking for a ten percent grant for that diminishment in value, and they're going to donate the rest of that value. They're not gonna seek compensation for, for that decrease in the value. And that scores highly with us, that they're not looking for other money to do that. Um, Upstate Forever is the land trust that will hold the conservation easement in perpetuity and ensure that the conservation values are maintained on the property. The OCCB has three hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and three cents, um, as of May eighteenth, um, in our budget, all of which has come through third-party donations. The majority of that was six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars from Duke. Five or six thousand dollars came from private citizens and entities making contributions, and twelve thousand of that was from, uh, of our funds, was from interest that we got on the money that we have. So we have adequate funds to make this grant. The conservation value, as I said, for this diminishment in value, which, which actually makes the property affordable for folks in the future, you know? The property's value's been decreased. There's forty-two acres that won't be developed, um, that is affordable, more affordable to buy. It will also allow an additional two thousand square foot residence to go on the property. There's an existing, existing residence there. The cost to the county, to the OCCB Conservation Bank, per acre to permanently conserve this property is four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents per acre. So that's the Taiko Eta, um, property.
Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Uh, discussion, and I'll just reiterate, reiterate what, um, Mr. Smith said. This is not ta, taxpayer dollars. This is private fund funding, so it's not taxpayer dollars. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining from this round.
Okay. Sorry if I just... Any other, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if it's for a recusal, potential conflict or related to a conflict, ethics rules, so you should remove yourself from the deliberations.
And, and let me just, if I may, if I may, there, there's, the second one is Wetstone Hill, that...
And if I discuss this one, then it, it may parlay...
I got you.
Yes.
Understood. Just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
Your call, I can't say, but...
I'll stand out for the second one, but I'm staying on this one.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right. The next, next one is the Wetstone Mill Property, O'Conne County Conservation Bank Board Easement Funding, unanimously approved on Tu, Tuesday, Bay Eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one for council-approved funding in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars for a conservation easement to Upstate Forever.
Uh, very good. This is also a small property, uh, thirty-eight acres. It's out on Earl's Ford Road in Mountain Rest. Um, it contains nineteen point six acres of forested woods, eighteen point five acres of open pasture that's currently leased for cattle grazing. Um, there's a five-year lease on it. The landowner will honor that lease. It's, it'll stay there in, as a working farm. Two-thirds of the property is prime and statewide soils. It's suitable for threatened endangered species as well as non-native wildlife species. This property is bordered on three sides, uh, two sides by Wetstone Creek and on one side by a major tributary to Wetstone Creek, um, which is an impaired water, uh, for sediment pollution and for nutrient pollution from livestock. So this conservation easement there will help improve the water quality of Wetstone Creek, which of course goes into the Chautauqua River about three miles away. It adds to and, and maintains, uh, the general scenic nature of the area, which is one of the conservation values of our ordinance. This is a change from the first version you got to the current version. The next piece is that they will go, uh, Upstate Forever will go to the South Carolina Conservation Bank for a grant of twenty-five percent of that conservation value. And the conservation value here is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Ten percent will come from the O'Conne County Conservation Bank. The landowner's gonna contribute, donate essentially the other sixty-five percent of conservation value. They are also going to apply to the Natural Resource Conservation Service for matching funds to do improved steam, stream protection. They've got thirty-four hundred feet of stream front, so we see that as a good thing in improving fences, gates, et cetera. So it has really solid water quality benefits. This property has been in the Lombard family for generations, and, uh, Mr. Ernest Lombard owns it, and this is the legacy that he wants to leave for this property. He wants it to be saved in perpetuity, conserved in perpetuity, like he's known it and his family's known it, um, which is a lot of the reason why folks do conservation easements. And skipping back to the first one, uh, the owner there has stage four cancer, and, and he sees this as a legacy act of his own to protect that property. So that's how a lot of people see conservation easements. The cost per acre for the county to permanently conserve this is three hundred and one dollars and eighty-one cents.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public hearing for the following ordinances. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Ordinance establishing Chapter Forty of the O'Conne County Code of Ordinances to be entitled cultural and historical preservation and in acting Article Five, there's a caption protection of historical memorials. No one has signed up for public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? If not, I close public hearing on Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Public hearing twenty twenty-one dash twelve. An ordinance consenting to the transfer of certain real property that has been forfeited to the Office of the O'Conne County Sheriff, authorizing the county administrator to take certain actions in relation thereto and other ma, related matters. No one has signed up for this public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? If not, I close public hearing Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh one. An ordinance to establish the budget for O'Conne County and to provide for the levy of taxes for ordinary county purposes, for the Tri-County Tech, Technical College Special Revenue Fund, for the Emergency Services Protection Special Revenue Fund, for the Road Maintenance Special Revenue Fund, for the Bridge and Culvert Capital Project Fund, for the Economic Development Capital Project Fund, for the Parks, Recreation and Tourism and Ca, Tourism Capital Projects Fund, Dent Service Fund, Victim Services Special Revenue Funds, for the Capital Vehicle slash Equipment Fund, and all in O'Conne County for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-one, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. We have several people signed up for this public hearing. Mr. Tony Adams.
I'm still Tony Adams, and I'm still a convert, a concerned taxpayer of O'Conne County. I've been watching the county budgeting process and budget fairly close since fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen. And I saw some changes beginning to take place after January the first, two thousand nineteen. This time just happened to be when we went from a conservative majority on council to progressive majority. And Ms. Brock moved into the administrator's office. My first concern arose when the budget development process for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty, uh, two thousand nineteen and twenty, county, county general fund was finally settled at forty-nine point eight million dollars. Some people seemed giddy that the budget was so close to fifty million dollars and the prospect of breaking through fifty million in the future. This concerned me a little bit. We thinking about spending, but I didn't think too much, much of it then. I just filed it back in the back of my old head. It didn't take long to see what was gonna happen. A little over a year later, we were given a proposed general fund budget with a four-plus million increase to fifty, fifty-four million dollars. This was, but, this last year. Due to the unknown Chinese virus mess, the council wisely went back to the forty-nine point eight million previous year budget as a starting point for this fiscal year. However, this dope number did not hold long, and on September seventeenth, two thousand twenty, a budget amendment was approved that added two point seven million dollars to this year's budget for a total of fifty-two point five million dollars. We blasted right through fifty million, fifty million dollar threshold with plenty in room spare. I don't disagree with all additional spending, such as the accrual account to buy vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. This was actually a good move, similar to what was used in private industry. Now this year, for some reason, four million seems to be a preferred number, 'cause we're facing another four point three million increase to almost fifty-seven million dollars. A year ago, we were setting at forty-nine point eight million dollars. I don't really know how much more of this I can stand. Seriously, I believe you need to make some changes in the county's budget procedures. Public input needs to be solicited much earlier in the process, like after the first proposal has been sent to council, so us taxpayers can find feedback to the council. 'Cause believe it or not, we're the ones that fund the budget. 'Cause believe it or not, we're the ones that fund the budget. It's not your money, it's spend's hours. It almost appears that waiting until its last late date in the process is a tactic to hinder public input. This was pointed out to me at the last council meeting when Mr. Kane, Mr. Davis, Mr. Elliott asked Mr. Durham and Mr. Hart why they waited so long to bring up their concerns. Personally, I cannot believe that Mr. Durham and Mr. Hart had not made their concerns known prior to the last council meeting and their concerns ignored. And basically, Mr. Elliott, you admitted that. You said that you'd had three budgets the whole work session. What it appears to me is four people are attempting to set the budget for eighty thousand people in Oconee. Ms. Block and you three progressives on council, it appears y'all prepared to jam this general fund budget down and through. However, if you remotely or remotely interested in good governance and stewardship for our tax dollars, I have a suggestion for you. Why don't you start with the present budget numbers for the new fiscal year, just like you did last year? President was sat there, and go through a true budgeting process instead of just developing a spending plan. And Mr. Elliott, you'll comment earlier tonight, I think, of the good example. What galled me is spend, spend, spend mentality. If another dollar comes in, go spend it. I don't even think you look at the alternatives, and they are alternatives to spending. I mean, we done, and another thing, a lot of what y'all are spending now goes in the recurring expenses. We're blessed here in Oconee. A good economy, the future looks bright, and the prospect of us continuing to go up is good, but I can guarantee you somewhere down the road, it'll go down. Just look at history. And all this recurring money y'all adding to the budget goes on the taxpayer's shoulder. And when it turns down, we'll be asked to increase the taxes or have to make a budget cut. And I can tell you, if you look at history, what's gonna happen? A high probability it's not gonna be a budget cut unless it really gets real rough. So what I am concerned about is this spend, spend, spend mentality. If a new dollar comes in, we're gonna spend it. Think about us taxpayers a little bit. Nothing else, share it with us, spend half of it and give half of it back. There are alternatives. As a matter of fact, I personally believe you need to go back to the forty-nine point eight million you started this year with because the public did not have any input on a two point seven million you added to it through, to it through a budget amendment on September seventeenth, two thousand twenty. I thank you for your time.
Uh, Mr. Pete. I butchered your name last time. Are you, there you are. Please say your last name, because I'm sorry.
Don't worry about it, Comey Smith. I like to.
About how bad?
Tony Adams pretty much covered everything that I've been thinking about and everybody in here. I do have a question about something that's in the budget about, uh, I'd like somebody to clarify what the diversification officer is. I believe we've got one in Oconee County now, and I'm kinda curious about that. Um, I, I'm also kinda curious about, uh, about where, where we stand, uh, on, on Planned Parenthood. Is, is this county doing anything to fund and send money out of this county to fund Planned Parenthood, because if they are, it's a disgrace. Uh, I, I, I think McMaster is trying to put some, you know, rules together in the state to cover these things, which I think is a great thing, but I'm kinda curious. I've heard rumors, and rumors are rumors, okay? That's why I'm here talking to you guys today about it. And, and, and Tony's a hundred percent right about, about taking money in and, and, uh, fellas, I, I don't, there are some people in here that are, that are my age. I'm seventy-two years old. I remember way back when and Eisenhower and Kennedy. Kennedy was the last, the last good Democrat that I think ever was on the face of the earth, and he was for funding homeless people. He was for insuring people. We have, you and my dad had conversations about this all the time, but he also funded it with capitalism. He didn't fund it with socialism. He didn't take money from the taxpayers. He, he, he took money from, from legitimate businesses, and I think this is what you guys are trying to do here, is trying to form some businesses in the county that, that'll generate income, but it also generates jobs. And when you start raising taxes, you know, as well as I do, it's, it's, it's plain on the nose of your face, they cut back. People cut back, cut back, and who ends up taking the beating? The working man does. So there's a lot of diversification that can be done, you know, with this type of thing. But fellas, if you've got a, if you've got a budget that's, that's a million dollars and you only spent two hundred thousand dollars, uh, give me the rest of it and I'll put it in, 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 in a, I'll buy General Motors stock or something with it. You know, save the money, do something with it instead of just trying to blow it like Tony said, or, or talk about it and come up with solutions that, that y'all wanna do that can, that can help the county out with the help of the voters. You know, like a lot of the people got up here today about roadwork and about different things that they need to take care of, about conservation. So basically, Tony pretty much hit it, but I'm, I'm kinda curious about the diversification officer situation. Somebody said there's a man that's getting paid eighty thousand dollars right now to diversify the police department, and I'm curious about that, you know? Uh, diversification is getting two, two groups of people together to hash out problems that they have, and I've heard that's not happening in that direction. Again, that's a rumor. That's why I'm up here talking to you guys to see if I can find out some of these things. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, the man running the show ought to be controlling, who, who, he ought to be controlling the diversification. You know, the man that runs the plant takes care of the plant. The attitude of, of the workforce is a direct reflection of the attitude of management. So anyway, that's just all I've got to say, guys.
Mike. Horst. Horace.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Mickey Haney?
Yes. I spent the last, uh, few weeks reviewing the budget, and, uh, it surprised me. I mean, we got businessmen up here. I think you accounting yourself right. And just going through it, I found some things that is concerning. So if you would, I actually had to bounce between two documents. Uh, one document is over under the financial, under a financial transparency page. So when I'm calling out these page numbers, if I call out page three of one oh one, I'm talking about the document that was uploaded on the materials for the county council. If I'm talking about, uh, the other document, which only has eighty-nine pages, I'm referring to that document. So, uh, just right off, when we look at the fiscal year twenty nineteen backup material under the general fund, the revenues and others do not match the twenty nineteen in the financial transparency annual budget. Page three of eighty-nine versus page three of one oh one. So it leads me to think that you can actually force numbers in the system that y'all are using. And there's further evidence of that when you go to page five and six of the expenditures of the total general government, there's a nine thousand dollar mistake. The actual line items do not total up to the total amount, so that tells me that number's been forced. So the, the legitimacy, can't talk, this document being legitimate, I have my doubts. And I went back and I noticed that we use the same auditor in the past few years to audit. Now, I don't know if they're just auditing the process or if they actually audited the numbers, but the problem with using the same auditor over and over, they're not gonna go in and find these problems. Why would you bring light on something that you missed the prior year? We need to switch up and have different auditors. I know you're probably gonna pass this budget the way it is with the problems it has, but there are some issues that needs to be dealt with, and one of them is we need to have independent auditors changed up and not use the same one over and over. All right, so moving on, on page three of one oh one, the revenue from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty was a hundred and ninety-five million and some change. The expense from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty is a hundred and ninety million and some change. Now, I'm sure most of y'all can do some math out here and realize we had a four million and some change surplus going across those years. But every time we get a surplus, it seems that we find ways to spend it. It's not given back to the taxpayers, and I think, uh, Mr. Elliott made a comment, we're not raising taxes. Well, Mr. Elliott, I have to ask you, if you're raising fees for documents and services given to the citizens by the county, is that not a form of taxation? The last time I checked, it was. So yes, we are raising taxes, folks. If you look at the, uh, budget for twenty twenty revenue was forty-nine, uh, basically fifty thousand right at it. The actual revenue was fifty-two and a half, uh, million, I'm sorry, uh, fifty million versus fifty-two and a half million. The actual expenses was down, which is right at forty-nine. That means we actually spent a million less, and we had an excess of two and a half million, approximately. That means a gain for this last past year of twenty twenty of three point five million, approximately. If we keep feeding the beast, the beast being the government, it will continue to grow. It will continue to think up and come up with ways to oppress, as you mentioned, Mr. Kane, bringing in a, uh, let's see, what was it? Ordinance officer? So when you bring an ordinance officer in, the problem with that that I see is things change and his job titles change, and then he starts feeding on other things to keep his job. So in the comment you made, that is a tool we can use to clean up Utica, and I, I forgot who spoke on Utica and about how you're gonna tax a, uh, or fine a, a person that doesn't have a job. That, that's a good comment. Uh, what it will be used for is for the average citizen out there because his neighbor doesn't like his recyclable material in his yard when he's in the rural area, or his neighbor doesn't like the car he left sitting there to have to work on with his kid. All right, so going on through here, some other things that I've seen, uh, and I'm probably gonna, don't get me wrong, I'm ex-military, I came out, I worked in law enforcement, so I'm all for law enforcement and I'm all for the firefighters. But what I see this county government doing is you're lacking in the scope. These people are coming in asking you for things, and they're not telling you what is it gonna bring to the citizens? How are we gonna pay for it? What's the return on my investment? What is the measurables? If they say that these additional firefighters are gonna reduce response time, they should be a time that's gonna reduce it by, in what area? But what I see here scares me. Well, it really don't scare me, it just breaks me. Acknowledgement to me. It almost looks like with this amount that either we're trying to take over another department or we're trying to run out all the volunteers. If that's the case, shame on yous. Shame on every one of yous, because those volunteers, I guarantee you, are there because they're not getting paid, because it's their desire. You know, there's a big difference between a missionary and a person that's actually desired to be there versus one that is getting paid to be there. So I have to question that. I have to question that growth. You're talking about, and I get into it on, on down here, about the growth of that. Uh, matter of fact, the overall county growth from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two under the wages is twenty-eight percent approximately. Now, that's the wages, so I have to ask the question. The last meeting I was at actually stated that you was gonna give a three percent increase, which is sixty-seven, uh, six hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars, which actually ends up being about a three point one, uh, four five. Then, if you view the pages of each department under salary, you notice there's a salary increase. If you take out the ones that you're actually hiring in somebody on, it's not matching up. So if you look at it in, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, everybody's getting approximately, some departments more than others, an eight point six percent increase per year. I don't know about where y'all from, but if you get anything more than three percent, you're getting a, a promotion. So explain that. Then you go down to page thirty-nine of one oh one, and you got a increase of four point fifteen percent, but a decrease in the health, work, and dental. I don't know what that's about. I'm just trying to bring up some discrepancies, so hopefully y'all find it in y'all's hearts to, uh, go back and do the workshop as Mr. Durham had asked. Fire and EMS salary wage increase, four point seven three. Uh, with the new hires included in that, because they were not included in, it's actually a twenty-one point three, four percent increase for that form, just on wages. Information technology, I can't figure this one out. I tried doing the numbers. Salary and wage increase went from, uh, three hundred and seven thousand to up hundred, to up to, uh, three hundred and eighty-three. That's on page forty-eight, one oh one. That's a twenty percent increase, but I don't see anywhere in the recommended, uh, for someone that would fall into that salary range, so I'm confused about that one. So it looks to me like every time we have gained in funds, revenue coming in, we have decided to spend those funds. And we've come up with new means. I mean, we've got a communication specialist. Really? A communication specialist? How often do we talk to the media? Have we not had somebody that's very competent right now that's been doing it for us? I think we have. I haven't seen any complaints, but we're gonna hire in a communication specialist because we got to make up that fifty-two million dollars that we gained through revenue. We gotta find a way to spend it. We don't wanna save it, we don't wanna put back and plan for those assets that are, that are actually going, their life's gonna expire in ten years from now. We want that to be another lump sum to raise that price again, so we can keep raising the taxes. And I'll get to the tax burden on us here in a minute. We also got a course planning and code enforcement officer. You know what I think about that? It's just gonna be a heavy hand of the county, use it to, to go out and enforce restrictions on us freedom-loving folks. Engineering stormwater management. Explain that one to me. The last time I checked, DHEC was in charge of that. The last time I checked, we had the road crews that could do that. So I, I noticed you're shaking your head no, but we also have legal fees in here. So I noticed you're shaking your head no, but we also have legal fees in here. I'm sure we can get a civil engineer with a PE come out there and do that for us at a lot less cost. So there's really no money set aside for replacement of assets. And the county's only seen a 9% growth in population since 2015, if I'm correct. So I do not understand why we're pushing such a large growth in our government body. I just don't understand it. If you, the reason I pulled fire out, because it had one of the largest ones, and you know, 2019 was just on wages, was 20%. 2020 is 19, and 2021 is 14. It doesn't make sense to me. There's no documentation telling me that their response times are that slow. And I see we got a guy in here. But I will tell you what it could do. If you get rid of those volunteers, if they get fed up because they're not getting the attention, that they feel they're not needed, response times are going to get very slow. They're not going to show up, and it's going to be the mess y'all created. The airport, now this one really irks me. So the airport gets 30% of the transportation budget. Roads and bridges gets the rest. 30%? How many of y'all flying here? None? Okay. I didn't see no planes when I came here either, so. That just doesn't make sense to me. And when I look back through the papers, the documents, unfortunately, I don't have line item, itemization of what was spent and what was saved, or what profit was made. But I noticed this year, we're putting 5.32% to the airport, and we're giving 3% to the roads and bridges out of the budget. That sounds misguided. The older lady was talking about needing signs put up. Of course, those might be state roads. Another individual was talking about, or maybe it was her talking about the roads, how bad a shape they were in, all over this county. So explain to me how we're going to put more money to the airport, which already takes up 30% of that budget, actually a little over 30% of that budget, and put less money to the road department, which actually needs more funds? I just don't understand it. But y'all wanted to vote on this right away. I mean, apparently y'all had these work sessions, and y'all went over this. If y'all did, and I'm just the average guy. So there's, I'm sure with me just picking this out, there's a lot that I missed. I'm sure someone else can go in here and find more. But I'd figure those that deal with this should take this and do their due diligence to go line item by line item. Because you're not working for this county. You're not working for these departments. You're working for the taxpayers. You're working for me. And what I see is a major misuse of funds. Some of the things don't make sense. If you go back to the first page, or actually the third page, and start looking at it and look at it compared to the budget, the expenditures are out of control, but yet you hit the budget numbers. Explain to me how you do that. It doesn't make sense. So what I'm asking y'all to do is do exactly what the taxpayers asked you to do. Pay attention to public safety. And review the budget as if it's coming out of your back pocket. Because if you fail to do that, you do not deserve to sit up there. If y'all are just voting this through because you have relationships with the county departments, then shame on y'all. There has to be a scope sheet of why they want these additional funds, and what is it going to give back to the county? When is the payback going to be? Is it direct or is it indirect payback? And what is it going to be? We just don't dish out funds because it's a good idea. That's not a way you run a business, and this county should be ran like a business. If you're just dishing out funds because it's your pet project, then shame on you. You need to look and see what number of the county is going to affect, and then decide if it's a worthwhile project. So many projects are taken on only because it's a great idea, but only 3% of the county uses it. Heck, the airport's probably a very good example. Now, am I saying get rid of the airport? No. But I'm saying there's things in the airport that we need to rethink. We need to do some risk mitigation in the airport. Right now, we've got them running their own fuel truck. What's the first thing they check when an airplane crashes? Fuel contamination. Why would we want to take that burden on? Explain it to me. It would be much easier to hire that out and have somebody else lob them. Those are the things I don't understand. But I'm sure that y'all find it in your heart to do the right thing. Hopefully, y'all will get over your deal of not wanting to go back into a workshop. Because right now, this budget, the way it works, or the way it looks, all you're doing is feeding the monster, which is big government. And the last time I looked at y'all's campaign slogans and all, I think you had conservative there. So go be conservative. Get together. Go line item by line item. I did not have a lot of time to invest in this, but I invested a lot of hours of my own time when I supposed to have been doing other things this got me behind on. So the least y'all can do for me is take an hour and go through it. The other thing I'd like to see in the near future, it is crazy for the citizens to have to download something that can be in Excel. We need to have a means to export this document in Excel. I actually went through and entered all the data. So we should never want to hide information from the citizens. The other thing that I'd like to see is, in each department, a link to link you into the expenditures. Where's the money going? In all capital projects, in all additional funds, I'd like to see scope sheets with an ROI on them. Return of investment. When's it going to happen? That is good business, good business practices. Proving things just because we want to is not. You run an insurance agency, right? If I came to you, if I was working for you and said, "Hey, I need $30,000 for another computer," would you give it to me? Then treat this like a business. That's all I got to say.
Got one written comment. It's from Tracer, Southers Chief, Oakway Fire Department, Wilkerson Chief, Fair Play Fire Department, Fabian Skelton, Chief Friendship Fire Department, Jamie Brock, Chief Crossroads Fire Department, and Andy McGuffin, Chief South Union Fire Department. We, the undersigned, express our concern regarding the 2021-2022 budget for the Fire Emergency Services 107. The primary reason is that none of the budget has been communicated to the Fire Chiefs Association as a courtesy nor to the Fire Commission, as required by Coney County Ordinance. In the budget, we have specific concerns related to the following. Total employees has increased from 21 in 2017 to 36 in 2021. Another four positions are added, and the proposed budget will result in an 81% increase of salary and wages in a five-year period. Addition of another 24-hour crew will likely be detrimental to the volunteer agency where they're assigned. This is based on negative impact of volunteer participation in areas where 24-hour personnel are already assigned. 2021-2022 budget should reflect 35 employees max, minus one from current budget due to no future requirement for a career center instructor. Further adjustments, negative, positive, should be done after a detailed formal review and evaluation. At the May Fire Chiefs Meeting, it was stated that renovation of a building at the former Oakway High School, 250,000, was to ensure space was available should it be needed in the future. Unclear if the 40,000 in the Special Revenue Fund 107 is for this same project. This should not be funded until such a time verifiable need is identified in the air for the facility to house 24-hour personnel. Are there any other public comments of the public hearing? If not, I close Public Hearing 2021-01. Public Hearing 2021-02, an ordinance to establish the budget for the school district of Coney County and to provide for the levy of taxes for the operations of the school district of Coney County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. No one has signed up for this public hearing, so I close Public Hearing Ordinance 2021-02. Public Hearing Ordinance 2021-03, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for the Kiwi Fire Special Tax District and to establish the budget for the Kiwi Fire Special Tax District for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. No one has signed up for public hearing on Ordinance 2021-03. I close Ordinance 2021-03. Third readings. Third reading of 2021-11. An ordinance established in Chapter 40 of the Coney County Code of Ordinances to be entitled Cultural and Historical Protection, enacting Article 5 thereto, captioned "Protection of Historical Mind." Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Luther Law for his effort in bringing this ordinance forward, and appreciate all you do to preserve all of our history in Coney County. That's all.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Third reading of Ordinance 2021-12. An ordinance consenting to the transfer of certain real property that has been forfeited to the Office of the Coney County Sheriff, authorizing the county ministry to take certain actions in relation thereto and to end other related matters. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
In discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think certainly some valid points have been brought up by some of the commenters. And I think it bears repeating that there was a strategic planning meeting February 19th. There was a budget.
Paul, is this, is this on this, this ordinance is about the?
I'm sorry. I apologize. That's on the wrong ordinance.
Any other discussion on this ordinance? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Second reading of the following ordinances. Ordinance 2021-01. An ordinance to establish the budget for Coney County and to provide for levy of taxes for ordinary county purposes for the Tri-County Technical College Special Revenue Fund, for the Emergency Services Protection Special Revenue Fund, for the Road Maintenance Special Revenue Fund, for the Bridge and Culvert Capital Project Fund, for the Economic Development Capital Project Fund, for the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Capital Project Fund, for the Debt Service Fund, for the Victim Services Special Revenue Funds, for the Capital Vehicle Equipment Fund, all in Coney County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Disagreed. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman? So my request two weeks ago was not unreasonable for us to come back together as a council at least one more time with adequate time available to review the budget, line item by line item. Yes, we've had three budget meetings. The first one was simply recapping the council's strategic plans for the year. Then we had two others, which was PowerPoint presentations in about 45 minutes capped by another meeting. So what I was requesting is to have the whole council come together, let's go line item by line item. Mr. Haney pointed out a lot of stuff. I tried to take notes. But you know, we've increased spending by, you know, 4.5 million or 8%. Far outpacing the growth of the county. Lots of spend way more than counties equal to us or larger. You know, Pickens County has about 130,000 people. Their general fund balance is 48 million. For person, 58 million. So that's the average cost of citizen for them of $369. We're at 729. Lawrence County, a very similar county to us as far as population demographics, their general fund budget is 26 million, which is about $371 per citizen. Now, the budget's, that's not, just like us, that's not the whole budget. Their budget across all accounts is 38 million. We're at, what, 76 million? And same thing with Pickens, their budget across all accounts is 77 million. We're at 76 million. Again, a much larger county, 40% bigger population. Some discussion's been brought up on emergency services. If you look at the wages and benefits for emergency services, it's increased 82% from 2017, from just under 1.5 million to a little over 2.6 million for this next proposed budget. I'm not saying it's not needed, but I also spoke with Ms. Brock earlier today about documentation of why the growth's needed in every department, and how can we, how can we track that? And what's the return on investment to the county, to the county citizens? Just like a business, you should be able to see it and track it, should be achievable. But anyway, so that's 82% increase, just the emergency services. County's not growing that much. So if a county's grown that much, to me, solid waste should be tracking that same number. And solid waste in that timeframe since 2017's grown 9%. From 1.7 million, a little over, just under 1.8, to just over 1.9 million. So what I was asking for is a line item by line item, as a council, take the time for the citizens, and we can go through it together because all of us together can bounce things off of each other and find maybe some places we can save the taxpayers some money. The whole budget increases wasn't just simply stemmed from the administration or staff. There's a lot of it that was council-induced from a strategic planning session. Some of that I supported, but we need to have a cost analysis and a benefit analysis of why we get here. And just some anomalies, like maybe simple answers, right? But probate judge advertising. This increase, this is fees, fees that increased from $6,500 to $100,000. Ms. Brock?
Mr. Chair, you asked this question earlier today.
Ms. Brock, let me go ahead and amend the motion for the fee schedule change.
Okay, yes, sir.
So I make that motion to amend this ordinance for the fee schedule changes mentioned by Ms. Brock in the administrative comments. Any discussion on that amendment?
Mr. Chairman? So the fee amendment schedule, that's right here, that was passed down. So it's increasing the fees, but this is not changing, does this change the revenue that you was anticipating?
Absolutely not. This reinforces and reinforces the revenue. If I may bring back, just for memory purpose, in our April 13th budget meeting, I handed out bill of valuation data and explained to council and the public at that time that our building permit our building permit fees, so when you go to pull a permit for building a structure in Oconee County, whether you're an in-county builder, home permit pulling, residential permit pulling, or you're an out-of-county builder, we have been using standard or the price model that was developed and passed in 2008. We are extremely far behind in updating some data and information for our services and building codes. Because next year is a reassessment year, and that reassessment was postponed one year for the valuation services based on software that we had issues with, the state required transfer of software data. There were some issues in that turnover. We want to ensure that the reassessment was implemented fairly and accurately across the board. So it was delayed for one year. The 2019 numbers will be what the valuation is, which is what we discussed in the April 13 budget committee meeting. And these handouts are online, and I can make copies if anyone wants to see them. Just human error, which happens from time to time when you make a document this large embedded in each other. And I apologize for the inconvenience, but human error resulted in the omission from the fee being left from that document.
So I do remember talking about the building, fee adjustment, a couple months ago. But what's driving the tipping fees increase, it looks like it's all solid waste here?
It is. If I may again, Mr. Chairman, this was also on the April 13th, I must have been taking terrible notes that day because this was just an omission and error on my part to direct staff to change this document. We were notified months ago that two surrounding C and D landfills around us have closed, and that we are getting out-of-county contractors bringing in large loads, which has increased the cost for us to provide enough staff to adequately cover, man the landfill, and get the tickets printed in and out for the customers. Clemson has also been utilizing us quite a bit for commercial. MSW, there is a need to increase the rates on that because we are beginning to need two people in the transfer station on a daily basis, and this would help us cover the cost of having that additional personnel working part-time at the transfer station.
Any other discussion on the amended motion?
So where was it tracked in the building on the budget to where it was still captured in the expected revenue?
It's tracked in the anticipated revenues. And when you create a budget document, sir, what you do is make, you don't create an expenditure sheet, you look at what your anticipated revenues are for that sheet. Those revenues were anticipated based on my notes, it was just not included in the actual document.
So it was in the computer system, the spreadsheet, so to speak?
Yes, those revenues were in that document.
I'm not sure what, you had a 101-page document that I don't have, I have 101.
That was actually loaded up as backup material for the last meeting.
Five-four.
Yes.
Five-eight-two.
I've got a copy of it right here.
Okay, I could figure out which document was on that document.
So we've got a...
But the thing is, that did not match what...
I understand, I just want to make sure this is clarified in the document.
So we've got amended motion to vote on? Any other discussion?
Yeah, I've got one question. We are gonna, we're not voting on the budget itself.
No, this is amend, amend the ordinance, excuse me, I said motion, amend the ordinance to adjust or replace these fee schedules with these, at least current fee schedules.
The two pieces that were delivered by Ms. Brock.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, one question. If, being that there's a lot of folks bringing in out-of-county waste, is it legal for us to charge a higher rate to out-of-county versus in-county?
Okay, this is not an out-of-county rate, this is across the board rate.
I know, that's what I'm saying, could we maintain in-county tipping fees and increase for out-of-county? So if you come from Pickens County, you come from Anderson County, or wherever.
You could, we don't charge residences for tipping fees though. Only businesses.
Commercial rates.
Correct.
Yes, I'm just referring to the commercial rates.
And commercial haulers.
Yes.
Yes.
So we could charge commercial haulers that are located in other counties or have jobs in other counties, is that how we would measure this?
There's no way to do that at the landfill, at the scale house at the landfill. There's absolutely no way that we would be able to track, I mean, what you would do there, I'm being honest, is you're gonna punish the honest people. We will punish the honest people. I worked at the landfill for years, I worked at solid waste for years. Anybody who is honest and an honest businessman is gonna walk in or come across that scale and tell you that they are conducting business as a business. On a daily basis, there's still, there, I'm sure a handful of them still there, you'll have people that you know are doing business, they'll even laugh about it and tell you they're doing business, but I mean, what are you gonna do? You don't have proof of their job site, you don't have proof of where the load came from. If we implemented separated fees, we're gonna punish honest people, and I hate to say that.
Okay, so we're... Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Could you use, could you use a registration system for Oconee businesses and say this business is registered, operated out of Oconee County, and maybe use driver's licenses, whatever, to document that it is a county, a county business?
We could, but what if they had an employee that worked in Pickens County that worked for them in Oconee County, and their license...
Just say a document, you know, registration for that.
Right now, we do require license and decals.
Because?
Again, you're punishing honest. I don't want to argue about it, I don't want to throw any particular business or person under the bus, but it's a chronic problem when you work on the honesty system.
So a couple of the haulers have reached out to me concerning tipping fees, and I've spoken with Ms. Brock about it, and their concern is that they pay tipping fees to haul household garbage, that the cities who haul household garbage doesn't have to pay. And the cities will also pick up household garbage outside of city limits to where they have a water tap. Well, my response to these guys was, well, you can't, I don't believe that we should charge the cities, just for the simple fact those city residents have already paid those solid waste taxes. Whether they take it themselves to a recycling center, or the city takes it to the transfer station form, they don't pay those fees, and really, the city's taking a leg off of it for us. But it's also the same way with these commercial haulers, is they're picking up the garbage from these citizens, which takes a burden off the recycling centers, which reduces the county's financial obligation, but they're having to pay a tipping fee, which they're having to charge to the residents that they're hauling for, which in essence is taxed on and added expense to them. This ain't the meeting for it, but maybe probably helps safety meeting, we can look at a way to police that better. If we make it cheaper for these businesses to operate, they can expand their business, we can help some of their, lower some of their littering problem maybe in the county, recycling issues, garbage issues. But again, how do you, how do you keep people honest? I don't know the simple answer.
I think this is a good thing to go on with law enforcement, welfare, and yeah, I think that should be an agenda item coming up.
Yeah, usually it's the little guy that hurts. Not in any one waste industry, but if you look at the largest industries coming in the entire Northeast down to the Southeast, most of them have something to do with waste. They're certainly a profitable industry.
Okay, so we've got the amendment, amendment to vote on? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, now we've got the amended ordinance, any discussion on the, yes, sir?
We're just taking up, just so we keep in line, Mr. Durham had asked Ms. Brock a question about the...
Yes, Ms. Brock, you were gonna answer, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Yes, I'm sorry, let me find my notes. I was asking about a line item that had increased dramatically, probate judge advertising as a fee.
Yes.
$6,500 to $100,000.
Yes, once you asked me that question this morning, I was fairly certain that I knew the answer, but I was not certain that I knew the amount of the answer, so I checked with the probate judge, Honorable Kenny Johns, and he informed me this morning that several years ago, the required advertising for probate estate were $20 to run once a week for three weeks in all three of the local papers, and that was $20 each. After the purchase of the local Wahala paper here a couple of years ago, the ads went up to $100 a week for the three weeks. Then we went to 225 requirement, and now we are at $417 for a three-day run.
So from $25 to $425?
Yes, sir.
To advertise in the local newspaper?
For probate, for probate.
It's an advertisement.
And the year-to-date on that, just as a reference for y'all, now this is an accounts of cost back to the county, but it is an upfront expenditure.
We get reimbursed for that, right?
We do.
Yes.
But it is an upfront expenditure of $135,000 so far this fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman, are we still on the budget now?
Yes.
Well, when I was telling you that Mr. Elliott told me it's late in the game, that's when I recommended to him that we go back to the 2019 budget, and he said it's late in the game. I have a definition of a bureaucracy, and my definition comes from James B. Edwards. He was the first Republican governor elected in South Carolina in 1974. He was a U.S. Naval Reserve Officer. He was former president of the Medical University of South Carolina. He was the secretary of the U.S. Department of Energy for President Ronald Reagan, and he was also a professional dentist. His definition was, in government, you have a job that takes one person. Three years later, that person comes to you and says, "I need a secretary." Three years later, the secretary comes to you and says, "I need a secretary." Now, you've got six years it's passed, and you've got three people that's operating the job that was there for one person. That's a bureaucracy. Now, the fire chief is wanting three employees plus one halftime. The sheriff is wanting three deputies, two for communications, two for the detention center. The solicitor's wanting one for administrative assistant. Planning is wanting one for code enforcement. Road department's wanting an engineer for storm management. South Cove is wanting a ranger. And now Mr. Pete and Mr. Haney, the last one I save for y'all. The administration is wanting one for communication specialist. I save this one for last, because this was the most asinine thing that I have seen in the five years that I've been up here. When I came on council in 2017, we had 21 full-time firemen. Now we're looking at 36. When I, in 2017, we had 480 people. Now we've got 533 people. And on this budget also, there's, we didn't use the proper procedure, because in Section 10 of 41 for objectives, the primary object of the fire service advisor commission includes, and if you go to line four, it says making budget recommendations and reviewing budget matters concerning the county fire services and the fire department and services. There's a five-member board, one of them is represented by the city, and the other four are from the county. And that's the letter that you just heard Mr. Elliott read, saying that they didn't approve this, and I think that if they didn't approve it, we need to wipe them people out of the budget right now. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
To Mr. Hart's point, why are we relying on staff for fire and emergency services versus volunteers?
Actually, we're not, Mr. Haney. That's a very delicate balance. This county has been fortunate and is blessed to have the call of the volunteer fire service in Oconee County come to the rescue at the sound of the siren. For years and years and years, this county's volunteer base has carried the emergency services and fire response, along with medical response lately in Oconee County. Those volunteers now have jobs. Those volunteers are dwindling. It used to be that you would find a family of four generations working in the same firehouse, grandfather, father, son, nephews. We just don't have that anymore. Are those volunteers still providing that service as a primary service for Oconee County? Yes. But shouldn't we support them in their efforts in doing that? So in the event that they fall short, that there is someone from the county who is paid, who is not working another job, who is trained on the equipment that is at that particular station to do that response, that volunteer can adequately carry out the responsibilities of their job while still being held in high regard as a volunteer pro Oconee County? We just don't have the same volunteer turnout that we used to have, and it's no fault of their own, times have changed. The station expenses are different, training is different, they have to get medical and physicals now, most people are working different shifts now. We have people in this county who are driving three counties away for their primary job, not to mention the time that they spend in the vehicle going to that job. They all deserve to have a little bit of family time and some support from this county to help them back up. Now, with the paid staff, I was having a conversation, you mentioned Chief Wilkerson in the letter, I had a conversation with Chief Wilkerson yesterday. There is a balance between having a great volunteer turnout and having paid staff. That balance is gonna be a tricky balance to achieve. The unintended consequences of anything that I would ever recommend that y'all do would be to not support those volunteer stations and their efforts to respond to emergencies in this county. But what we do want to do is make sure that when those volunteers are called, and that number just isn't the number that we need to get, this county is, the incidences are growing. Anybody that's got the 911 app can show you on their phone. I mean, during this meeting, I think we have three notifications just sitting right here. Somebody got up and left to go to a call. They're going to be in need for those supplemental services to be, there's another one, provided by the county. And it's not in any way an attempt to make the volunteers less likely to volunteer, it's an attempt to say, hey, we're right here with you. We're here with you. You know, Oconee County in 2010 began supporting the 17 independent rural stations at $60,000 per year. I mean, to date, that's $600,000 council has invested in each individual volunteer station. The increases in emergency services, we have not adequately funded equipment for the rural stations and county stations for years. I mean, you guys were awesome and passed the lease last year to purchase those trucks. We committed to funding additional fire trucks this year. We've got nine new trucks coming on in less than 18 months. Historically, that hasn't happened.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Why is it that South Union, the people that's there, the majority of them from out-of-county, they don't work, I mean, they work in this county, but they live in other counties. And the people at South Union, they cut their radios off when they go home at night, because they're not gonna go out when they got those firemen that are living there going in there. And I had a, I won't call the gentleman's name, he's an old-time fireman, and we had one of our full-time people there. He said, "Don't let there be a fire from 8:30 to 5 o'clock, because my volunteers will not follow that man out, because they resent him, he's getting paid and they're not." So that, you're talking about a fine line, I think we about to cross it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Speaking of some people in the fire service, it does appear to be a self-fulfilling prophecy to where if you move in some more paid staff, wherever they're at, the volunteers tend to say, well, there's somebody there who's getting paid, and I'm not gonna get out of there. So it seems like you self-fulfill that prophecy of declining volunteerism. But, Mr. Hart, you said that it was, what'd you say about the fire commission and the ordinance?
You talking about where it should go through the fire commission?
It says in the ordinance?
Yes, the ordinance is, let me go... Yes, the ordinance is, uh, let me get it back. It's in ten dash forty-one. It's objectivity. And that's where it says that these people are supposed to discuss the budget and what's going on in there, and this hasn't done it. These people that wrote that letter, that's what they're trying to tell you. We hadn't discussed this, and you're putting these people in on us.
So the fire commission makes budget recommendations?
Well, they discuss it, and they, yes, I guess you would say they come up and approve and say what they think that they need.
To my knowledge, if I may, Mr. Chairman, since I've been administrator, that has never been included in the budget process. Now, it may have been years prior to me, but last year, fire commission did not weigh in on that. And if that's the case, then the rescue commission ordinance probably states the same thing. So if we're violating one, probably violating both.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rick, can you?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. I'm looking at ten dash forty-one. This is the list of the primary objectives of the Fire Service Advisory Commission. Of course, it's an advisory commission, there's no requirement that any budget passed through the commission that they pass on and approve it, but it does state in there, making budget, one of their duties would be to make budget recommendations, review budget matters concerning Oconee County fire services and fire departments and services. So however, if I could come to them, they could bring something on their own initiative about budgetary issues. I don't know how that's always been carried out. I thought that they did, I know that they, as far as fire trucks went, they certainly had-
The emergency services replacement plan, but not for the operating budget. I'd like to, just for one second, thank Mr. Bohorn, wherever he is, if he's listening. He rallied for years to get the emergency services replacement plan passed. But the departmental budgets and salaries and number of staff, to my knowledge, has never been brought to the commission. I've been to a few commission meetings in the past several months, but the budget was not discussed at either of those meetings. But I know that, I'm ninety percent sure that the rescue squad ordinance is the similar or the same language, because those two are modeled off of each other. So if one is incorrect, then the other one is, and if one has been done incorrectly, then so has the other one.
Mr. Chairman? It is the same language.
It is. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What's in the county code of ordinance is, it is probably a pretty good idea with what we have going on between volunteer and paid fire, to pull it together and have the rural fire commission involved in budget recommendations. And some of these concerns that come out about those placing paid staff in a certain position disincentivizes volunteerism. Because we-
It's a worthwhile discussion, for sure. I don't know of anyone that doesn't know how to contact me.
It needs to be an agenda item for their board meeting to say, yes, well, they can give you, hey, this is what we need, this ain't what we need, we can use this here, you know?
Now, if I may, I realize this is a lengthy discussion, but I did see Chief Crone here. I just want to ask real quick on the record, who's responsible for the establishment of the agenda for the fire commission agendas?
The fire, the chair of the fire commission-
The commission.
-has sent me a call.
Yes, come forward so we can hear you.
Counsel, the chair of the fire and rescue commission does put in the agenda items for those, and then they ask us of information so that we can come to the meeting with certain agendas. Yes, there was discussion at the fire chiefs' meeting, that was the fire association meeting from your letter, but not the commission. That letter didn't come from the commission, it came from the fire chiefs at a different meeting, and there's a lot more fire chiefs than in that letter, you know, for that. So the commission sets their own agenda for that.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I want to address some of these things. We have to have a budget in place by the end of, well, ideally pass it by the end of June, so that when our fiscal year begins July one, we're operating under a legally enacted or budget ordinance. I mean, these are, this is good, this is good discussion. This has not happened in our budget meetings. I mean, I think it's very constructive. I'm just concerned, like, hey, we have to get this done, so what is the solution? You suggested another budget committee meeting. We're on a, we're on a long line here, and we have to get things done there.
So, we have, let me report my calendar. All right, so the special counsel meeting for the budget is on the twenty-second, correct? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I have. So, it's unfortunate, because it'd be before the third reading, but sometime between now and the twenty-second, we need to get together and have a meeting to go line item by line item and have these discussions.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to put, if y'all are going to consider that, this statutory requirement is a requirement, so it's not ideal, but y'all have to have a balanced budget by the end of June, have to pass it by June thirty, and the only other requirement that you're dealing with, in between second and third reading, there has to be at least seven days, so, and if you have second readings tonight and pass it, it's not a legal prescription or prohibition against amending it, but it's my policy favored if y'all can keep from amending it after second before third, because getting that to the public for them to have a chance to digest any amendments that happen right at third reading, this has happened before, is difficult, and, you know, kind of fails one of the purposes of getting public involvement. But legal requirements, have to have it passed, have to have at least seven days between second, third reading.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
A little bit into, as we talked about, the transparency before, I got on council, there's three of us that sit up on here that want to get, the video that people do watch for that time, the ability to get what was going on in council, what was going on on the committee meetings, planning meetings, was extremely difficult. You either got it on a CD or download file or something like that, and I know that because I tried to get one before. So, the way that this council has conducted business, and I appreciate the other two that are up here now, because they see the reasoning for having, and it wasn't cheap, you know, what we do up here is important, we want people to see it. And I've had people say, well, you know, you'll see it forever. Well, that's right, you'll see it forever, and you should see it forever. The budget, the budget, I've been part of budgets early on that were changed between a public hearing on a third reading and changed into the third reading, and I totally disagreed with that. Mr. Elliott has been part of something that we have set up here and made sure that there wasn't changes. How fair is that to have a public hearing on third reading and then change the budget into third reading? And that happened on two occasions that I was aware of. So, you know, from a standpoint of what we have put in place to have public involved is greater now than it has ever been, because you don't like to come up here and get a CD or a little plug-in, you're not relying on just media to hear, you're not relying on people to come here. I know we're busy, I can't come to all the meetings, but I like listening to committee meetings and planning meetings online, and it's not necessarily when that goes. So, that's why people are more involved, and I'm grateful for that, no matter if they're for me or against me. That's why we're doing the things we're doing to be transparent and get documentation earlier. Our budget process starts earlier than it has ever started before. Documents are uploaded earlier and made, a phone call away from anything that you can't find is on there. Our website, clear than it has ever been. Our IT department makes sure our documents are on there. So, you know, from a standpoint of, you know, not transparent, or it's hard to see this, or hard to see that, you know, you go back in time and look at what the battles that took place that you didn't see anything. So, you know, I sit here to say that, that we've done a better job. I don't expect people to come on a nine o'clock. It's extremely difficult to do this job, period, but also, all of us have jobs or have a lot of stuff going on in life that we can't go on there and come to a planning commission meeting, and so, you know, from that, we appreciate the IT working on there so people can hear what we're having to say, you know, the good and the bad of whatever the opinion is. So from that, we've been very, very transparent in the budget. We work on this budget literally all year long, and as those that are newly elected, you'll see, you'll start on next year's budget in a couple of months, and you'll make changes that you'll look at on this saying, hey, we probably need to do some stuff, projects coming on in next year or three years from now. So it's a working process as you continue to learn, and I'm grateful that people are involved in it. And that's the reason why I spend the time that I spend with staff, to go in there and sit down and see mounds of documents to go through and put this stuff together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
We, he brought a good point, and it kind of ties back to what we talked about earlier, what Mr. Haney spoke about, is we need some sort of documentation. This is one of this group is needing, and this is the return that we're going to have on this investment of taxpayer dollars, and then we can track that going forward and say, yes, we're hitting this target, or hey, maybe we need more here, maybe we need less over here, right? But it gives us a way to track it, and then to provide it to the citizens of, this is responsible spending. Or we can have a way to say, hey, maybe this isn't responsible, we need this somewhere else. So.
I do believe, from a department head's standpoint, on what I have seen them give reasoning for that, their budget questions, and everything's not given. There's a lot of things that are cut ever before it comes to council because of the decision of administrator and staff and agreements and disagreements. So, those things, it's not the department head bringing a budget for three million dollars and the administrator going checkmark, you know, there's a lot of things that go into that and back and forth conversations. I mean, this is not an easy process. I mean, if you want to sit down and go through line item by line item, you know, you know, that's the things-
Excuse me?
That's the things that, you know, we have continually done over the year to review the budget as it starts working, review last year's budget, review the year before, and those are the things that we have to do sitting up here to make sure that we're putting things in perspective. Review other counties' budgets, you know, some of the remarks that are made up here that we are out of line from other counties, there's a lot of fees and different placements of that that you may not understand.
I see.
So, I would also say that the good thing about that is, is talk to county councilmen from other counties and sit down and look at their budget, because you can get their budget document just like our budget is. And where we have a millage for economic alliance or economic industry or something like that, and we have the billings put in place for vehicle replacement plan, they have a lot of those things, as well as fire taxes and different stuff like that out there too.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
So I spoke with a councilman from Pickens County, I spoke with a councilman from Lawrence County. Budget across all accounts for Pickens County is seventy-seven million out of a hundred, roughly thirty thousand residents. We're at seventy-six million. Looked at the budget, spoke with a councilman from Lawrence County, across all accounts, their budget's thirty-eight million. Again, we're at seventy-six million. They're at approximately seventy thousand citizens, we're at seventy-five to eighty, wherever it's going to fall. So yes, I did look at other counties' budgets, and I did speak to councilmen from other counties. So.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things.
Just to address some comments from the public.
I have requested during our strategic planning conference and meeting, I spoke, speaking with Ms. Brock, we had the tornado come through Seneca. I was frustrated with the information flow from the county. I mean, it was a unprecedented event in recent, I mean, nobody working here had dealt with that situation. And I said, we've got to make sure that we are bringing our, I mean, Mr. Crone and Ms. Brock were working on the ground in Seneca and Utica for a couple of weeks and longer as well. Most of the staff was, I mean, Ms. Price was out there, that's not her job, she's in the finance office, but it was all hands on deck, but, and this is no negative on any of our staff. I was just concerned that the information, people were asking me questions, and I was trying to find information on Facebook and our website, and I couldn't find it, and I was very frustrated in a very intense situation. And I said, we need to have somebody whose job is devoted with getting information out to the public, to the press, so they can disseminate it. I mean, you look at many, many other governments and probably almost all of them, including the sheriff's office, he has a, which I think is a wise use of words, is a public relations person, spokesperson. But for me, that was when I realized we needed somebody whose job it was to communicate with the public and with the media. Secondly, with regard to the code enforcement officer, we had, we had a gentleman that just was hired as code enforcement officer, Ms. Brock, he quit pretty quickly after being hired.
He did separate very quickly.
So, that's been a difficult position to keep filled, because it's not a fun job. So, the, my request for that position is, if it's going to be, if one position's going to be empty for several months, we need to have somebody to continue the work. Do we have any idea of how many fines have been levied by the code enforcement officer?
No, we have one case pending coming to trial. I don't know that he is, our previous code enforcement officer's direction was to induce fine rather than correct error.
Right.
I think in that case, it was more of a partnership, let's try to get things resolved rather than let me write you a ticket.
It's a notice and warning process, and if it ever reaches a fine, I mean, I'm not aware of any-
We do have an upcoming case in court.
It is extremely rare that anybody goes to court and pays a fine in the code enforcement office, the initiated action. There's a lot of complaints, but a lot of times just dealt with. And I think we need some continuity. I think one of those two code enforcement officer positions is going to be vacant most of the time, frankly. I think it's going to be rare that we ever can find two people at the same time who are willing to do a pretty rough job, practically speaking. That's, because we were without one for how long, ten months?
Yes.
That doesn't mean we don't need one, that just means nobody wanted to do the job. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Could someone make a motion for a five-minute break?
I will.
Thank you all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor?
Motion rejected.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second reading of ordinance 2021-02, an ordinance to establish the budget for the school district of Oconee County and to provide for the levy of taxes for the operation of the school district beginning July 1st, 2021, ending June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance, second reading of ordinance 2021-03, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for the Kiwi Fire Special Tax District and to establish the budget for the Kiwi Fire Special Tax District for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There are no first readings of following ordinances, there are no first and final readings, discussion regarding action items. Unsold furniture for Oconee County 911 Center. Communications, $87,602.64. Budget's $200,000. Project cost, $87,602.64. Balance, $112,397.36. Is staff's recommendation that council approve the purchase of consol furniture for the 911 Center, Ex-Bix Systems, Inc. of Littleton, Colorado, in the amount of $87,602.64, as per HGAC contract number EC07-20. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So we had somebody speaking public comment. You know, I looked at the drawings and stuff like this and laid out. And commercial office equipment, I know is very expensive, particularly chairs, right? Because a chair that somebody can sit in for 24 hours a day is very expensive. But I, I agree that $87,000 seems excessive on the surface. Particularly if it's, a lot of commercial equipment is expensive because of commercial wear, if somebody uses it 24/7. This is the backup facility. Can you explain to me and to some of the public, some of the costs associated?
Yes, if my may. May I introduce, please, Captain Toulson? Are you here still? Thank you. That'd be nice. The answer's 911 calls.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your question. The, the question about it being a backup 911 center is a valid one. You're right in the fact, or the speaker was right in the fact, that on most normal days, it will not be used. The purpose of the backup 911 center is to instantly be available to our 911 center should a natural disaster such as a tornado take out the main 911 center or a fire in the building, which we didn't think possible, but we have had fires at the law enforcement center where we did have to evacuate the 911 center. It's designed to be stood up within 15 minutes to continue answering 911 calls at a, at a remote location. This location became available, as it says in the backup material, through a partnership with the school district where they provided us space. And in return, they will use the equipment to train future dispatchers on a daily basis. But the cost of the furniture is because it is, just like you said, it's designed to be used 24/7, 365. And we experience about a 20-year lifespan on that, on that specially designed furniture.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Chief.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Parks, Recreation, and Tourism, state and local tax regulations, $588,500. Requests were unanimously approved and recommended by the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Commission on 5/20/2021. Staff recommends approval. Tax recommendations for the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
RFP 20-02, Professional Engineering Consultant on Call Services, all departments to be determined, there's no dollar amount associated with this approval at this time. All county departments with a budget for professional services, they utilize this RFP as long as they do not exceed their budgeted amounts for these services. Any future professional services in any category that exceeds $80,000, excuse me, exceeds $50,000 will be brought to council for approval for that particular project. Staff's recommendation that council one, approve the award RFP 20-02 for Professional Engineering Consultant on Call Services to the following firms for the listed categories. AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Greenville, category A. Trans Systems Corporation, Greenville, South Carolina, category B. Terricon Consultants, Inc., Greenville, South Carolina, category C and D. Thomas and Hutton Engineering Company, Greenville, South Carolina, category E. Davidson Floyd, Inc., South Carolina, category F. LS3P Associates, LTD, Greenville, South Carolina, category G. And authorize the county administrator to execute the original contracts after approval and renew these contracts yearly, up to five years total, as long as all work is deemed satisfactory. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brock, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Were there any professional engineering consultants or firms in Oconee County?
Yes, we contacted several.
Okay. Was the bid just too high, or?
One of them was a no response. We had a no response. There was two within Oconee County that did submit, but they were very small firms, and they couldn't handle two or three ongoing projects at the same time. And then you have a committee that evaluates those proposals, and they rate them. So they go with the best bidding firm for the county.
Okay, thank you.
This for the record, that was Tronda Poplum, County Director for Oconee County.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brock, was this, or Ms. Poplum, was this issued through our standard RFP
Correct.
process so that if, I guess if you're in the business of doing government work, you would be notified or would be, you receive notifications?
It's advertised in our local paper and South Carolina business opportunities.
I would love to see more local companies in there, but tend to approve the recommendation, I reckon.
We also appreciate, appreciate good work that they do. And I think that's, again, the ability to renew those and go through those and the knowledge of those companies as well. And several of these actually do employ Oconee County citizens as well, so they do exist out there.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Two floating dock systems, Parks, Recreation, and Tourism, $131,299.40. A contingency of $13,129.94, a total of $144,429.34. Budget, $144,429.34. Project cost is the same, balance would be zero. Is staff's recommendation that council, one, approve the award of bid ITB 20-07 to Custom Dock Systems of Anderson, South Carolina, in the amount of $131,299.40 plus 10% contingency, in the amount of $13,129.94, a total award of $144,429.34. And two, authorize the county administrator to execute documents for this project and sign any change orders within the contingency amount. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. What size are these boat docks?
Mr. Shirley, hold that one. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. We're getting quite a revolving door up here tonight.
Appreciate the question.
Thank you, sir.
South Cove is a 12-foot by 80-foot dock. High Falls is a 12-foot by 70-foot dock. The only difference is one has a 10-foot longer walkway because of the size of the above. We currently have a 10 by 30, so we're more than doubling our size. These are aluminum construction, PVC decking on the walkway, and a tile system with concrete papers on the top for longevity. Very similar to what's at Joe Cassin.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
I don't know what size they were.
I think.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the discussion about the sewer, 1.5 million has been put off to executive session by the ended agenda. So the next one is council consideration approval funding allocation amount not to exceed $2 million for Towne Salem to complete the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund. Mr. Hart, will you come up and just kind of give us a go with you, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Council. I appreciate your time this evening. Yeah, just to kind of give you a general overview to refresh what the loop project, if we deemed it, will entail. We have phase one, two, and three. Phase one is currently almost ready to begin. That's the booster pump station, which allows the source water that we need for this area. It'll allow us to increase our purchaseability from the city of Seneca. Phase two and three entails a ground-level storage tank to increase airflow capacities, as well as around two and a half miles of duct lined pipe, which will bring water to an area that doesn't currently have water, that Salem has deemed as their business district. The total, total cost comes in right at $202 million. And we have the map. Perfect. If you could scroll up just a little bit for me. The, item A is the Highway 11 business corridor. Some 14 to 15 years ago, it's Towne Salem deemed that as their business corridor to try to grow toward that area. Item B is the ground-level storage tank that we need to be able to lift the water to supply that area. And the reason we need the additional tank is because of the different hydraulic gradients in the helium terrain in our, our neck of the woods. What this is going to do is instantly bring water to an area that does not have water. It's also going to allow us to sustain water flows and fire flows, or sustain storage and capacity as well as fire flows to the business area and the additional areas we have on Highway 11 currently. Now, if you'll notice where the item B is, something I'll mention of, that pink tank that's going to be constructed, if you look at everything around that, above Highway 11, can everyone identify Highway 11 as the business corridor A? Everything around that, and if you don't mind scrolling down for me, if you follow the lake from where we started, all the way down, everything is in red, everything, every bit of that is less than 18 years old. That's how fast our water system's grown, and that's the reason we need this so desperately. The, the growth in the area's been tremendous. It's, it's taken off, we can barely keep up. And what this is going to do is going to allow us to have the source water capacity to maintain that growth as those, those residential areas continue to fill in. And hopefully, that's what's going to bring us back into funding the business corridor. If you don't mind scrolling back down, what we're seeing is there's so many more people moving into our area. Salem's actually becoming a fertile place to sustain businesses. Where 15, 20 years ago, that wasn't the case. We actually have the foot traffic, lake traffic to support those. And in essence, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Any questions for Mr. Hart?
I got one. That little yellow
That little yellow spot, is that the one that's already there?
Yes, sir. That is on top of Smelter Mountain. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I know it's out of order for me to ask questions, but I have to put this into ordinance, I need to do recitals to satisfy the treasury regulations, and one of them, we need to address why it's necessary. So the folks that you're going to be serving with this, who are there now, are they on well water, I'm assuming?
Yeah. Any area that doesn't have, currently have water, they're on well water, and it's also going to put us in a position to add approximately 300 to 500 taps to a current area.
Is there any problem with well water? Is it fluctuate, lack of water pressure, lack of clean water?
On a mass scale, no. Individually, we do have people, you know, wells go bad, but on a mass scale, we don't have a contaminant or anything like that.
Water pressure issues?
Yes, pressure.
Pressure issues?
Yeah. What this will do, the reason we're adding the additional tank is we need to get the water to the tank with the yellow dot, because that's the highest gradient we have. Once we have that, we'll be able to sustain pressures to all those areas, whereas right now, this is a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Quick question for Mr. Root. How much is the Town of Salem receiving from the recovery, recovery fund?
I don't understand.
I believe it was, is it 60?
I wouldn't say 60 in my mind.
Are y'all putting that into this project as well?
I was unaware we were receiving monies, these both funds.
They should receive it through the state as a non-entitlement entity. But I can't plug it up, my computer's dead, but I think it was 60 on my memory.
It was 60 something. I remember 60 something.
Okay. Well, I can't answer that, because I didn't, we didn't know we were getting the money, so I don't know how we missed that. It's a good day to...
Well, if I may, just, so the state side of it has not made the announcement of when the distribution's due on how the agency is going to be done. They didn't have estimations based on the data, but there is no date of distribution announced yet, so maybe they just didn't want you to get too excited.
Okay.
And this is up to $2 million, so I mean, right, it could be, but to kind of lay a little bit more groundwork, I was advised by Mr. Root that we need to do this through ordinance versus vote on it tonight. So, any other questions for Mr. Root? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll make the motion, and Brett's staff, to prepare an ordinance to approve appropriations of up to $2 million to the Town of Salem for the Salem Water Loop.
Second.
And I also want to say, it presented back to council by June 15th, the next council meeting.
Okay.
You second it?
Yes, sir.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Boarding commission appointments, building codes, appeals board, win that large seat, no questionnaires on file. Council will go into executive session for the following purposes. Receive legal advice and discuss contractual matter regarding county broadband network. Discuss potential contractual matter regarding property acquisition for public safety and emergency services response. Three, discuss, discussion regarding an economic development matter, project Ruby Slipper. And four, discussion regarding economic development, project Drift. And we added a, another item by amending the agenda, and that is to receive legal advice and discuss the County Joint Regional Sewer Authority request for $1.5 million for the sewer sound project. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion, Mr. Root.
All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, we have second reading.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm sorry if I may interrupt.
Sure.
Before we go to that second reading, we'll need to take action on motion stemming from executive session. The first one relates to item number one, which was receiving legal advice and discussing a contractual matter regarding the county broadband network. Need a motion there to direct staff to finalize negotiations as discussed.
No move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Relation to item number two on executive session, which was discussing a potential contractual matter regarding property acquisition for public safety and emergency services response. Need a motion to direct staff to initiate negotiations as discussed.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we've got the second reading.
No, one more. I'm sorry. The last one was, the last one was related to the sewer authority matter. And I guess, yeah, I guess it's probably best just to take that as an action item as opposed to after executive session.
We stumped the attorney.
Nah, well, I'm just trying, I don't, no, we didn't stump the attorney. I think the cleanest way, if we can, this, so this doesn't relate exactly to executive session, but we have the action item now on the agenda that was, you know, that we moved before.
Right.
Discuss and take appropriate action on a request from the OJRSA to the county for the 1.5 million to be placed in a restricted account and to serve as surety for the EDA grant relative to the Sewer South project. This relates to the executive session discussion we just had. We have this item as an action item, we can address them both at this time before we have second reading on the broadband issue. What I need is a motion to direct staff to negotiate an appropriate funding agreement for the continuation of the Sewer South project, ensuring grant reimbursement to the county, and to bring that agreement, proposed agreement back to the council for consideration.
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Now.
There we go.
Second reading of the file, filings. Orderance 2021-13, ordinance one, approving the assignment of One Tone Telecom East interest in that certain network master agreement dated January 18th, 2018, to Up Country Fiber LLC, a wholly owned subsidiary of Blue Ridge Electric Corporation Inc. Two, approving and amended and restated network master agreement between Up Country Fiber LLC and Coney County. Three, authorizing Coney County administrator to execute the amended and restated network master agreement and other matters related thereto. Is there motion to approve?
No move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.